The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Town Council meeting. Tonight is January 17th, 2017. I will ask you to stand for the pledge and I will have Councilwoman Christopher lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, we have some special presentations for our firefighter service awards that we're going to be doing at the beginning of our meeting. But before we do that, with your indulgence, I'd like to ask Councilwoman Christopher to come with me to the podium. This evening is Councilwoman Christopher's last meeting with us. She has resigned effective February 1st due to the fact that she and her husband are going to be moving to Southington, Connecticut. So this evening, we would like to remember the service that she has given to the Town Council. Currently, Quinn is finishing up her third term. She has served as liaison to the Library, Park and Recreation, and Inland Wetlands Commissions. Is that right? Were there any others?
No.
Okay. Serving on the Town Council has challenges unknown to other boards and commissions. Quinn certainly understands that public service has its own rewards by helping citizens with concerns and solving problems that benefit our town. Quinn has served with commitment and dignity. She took her job seriously and always kept the best interest of Plainville foremost in her decision-making. Quinn, I'd like to wish you the very best of luck in your future endeavors. I wish you much happiness in your new home. We'll certainly miss you.
Thank you very much.
And as part of your leaving the council, you get to pick a chair.
That's right.
Side pick. Do we have one?
We have one over here that said.
So you can either have a rocking chair or the captain's chair that's on display, so...
I'll do a rocking chair.
You'll do a rocking chair. I think that's a good choice. I have one of those.
Yes.
And think of us when you're sipping your tea and relaxing. So why don't you say a few words?
Well, you know, I'm very sad to be leaving, but I'm very excited about the new house I get to have and my bigger closet that I'm going to get. So I've enjoyed this. Like I've said, I really enjoyed being able to give back to a community that gave so much to me. So thank you for everything and good luck to Plainville.
Good luck to you. And I have one more surprise tonight. While we're in the business of giving away chairs, we have somebody else here tonight that is deserving of a chair. And I'm going to ask Tom Boreo to step forward, please. I'm good. Turn around so you can be on TV. We want to see your lovely face. Make sure they can see you. Tom has been a member of our Fire Company Department for 40 years. And he has to retire next month. He must have started as a teenager, right?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we want to also wish you the very best in your retirement. You certainly earned it. My brother, who has known Tom for many, many years, he lives in Illinois, sends his best wishes to you. He's retiring also, so you guys can talk retirement sometime soon. But as part of your retirement, you are also eligible for a chair. So you can either pick a rocking chair, as Quinn did, or you can have the captain's chair that we have on display.
I agree with that call. And we set that up.
You set it up. Okay.
He asked what I wanted, and it might be your month. We've got two weeks left.
All right.
As military...
Come on, Quinn. If people want to hear what you have to say, Tom.
As military, I got 13 and a wake-up. As we short timer. So I'll be 70 in a couple of weeks.
Well, you know, your service to the Town of Plainville is immeasurable. A chair is certainly a small token of all that you've done for the town. We certainly appreciate all of your efforts and all of those many years of doing what you could do. So we appreciate it. We wish you the very best.
Thank you.
And wish you happy retirement. And don't go away. I'm sure you'll be around and we'll be able to see you for a long time to come. All right. Congratulations again.
Thank you again.
Okay. The next part of our presentation will be handled by Councilman Saunders. He's going to be recognizing our firefighters for their years of service and our new officers. So take it away, Scott.
I need my iPad, sorry.
This is one of my favorite meetings of the year. We get to recognize our firefighters for all they do for the community and their years of service to the department. And some tonight are going to be honored for many, many years. And, you know, people don't realize how many hours these guys put in, all the missed meals and missed sleep. And they put themselves in the line of danger to keep us all safe. So it's a pleasure to honor them tonight. The first one is for Keith Madison, five years of service. And these are all about the same, so I'm not going to read all of them. But this is a service recognition award for your outstanding commitment of five years of dedication and service to the community as a member of the Plainville Fire Department. And it is signed by all the Town Council members. So thank you very much for your service. Many more. Dennis is celebrating 10 years of service to the community with the Plainville Fire Department. And I know it's been a long 10 years, but many more to you as well in the town. And thank you very much for serving the community.
Thank you.
Mike has also spent the last couple of years serving as lieutenant. Mike, for your commitment of 15 years of service to the Plainville Fire Department, we say thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mark, you're up next. We move from 15 years to 25 years very quickly. Mark Cahill. Mark, for your extraordinary commitment of 25 years of service to the community as a member of the Plainville Fire Department, we say thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bill's not here, okay. Jeff Johnson. Now we move up to 35 years. Jeff, for your 35 years of dedication and service to the community as a member of the Plainville Fire Department, we say thank you very much for your service. You don't want to get up again, do you, Tom? As the council chair pointed out, Tom is celebrating 40 years of service through the Plainville Fire Department to the community. And Tom, thank you very much.
Please don't.
He was. It's true. Rob Sealekin, you are our inspiration.
Now I know how old Chris is, too. Larry, last but not least. For those who don't know, watching this on TV, Larry is also our fire marshal. Larry, for an exceptional commitment of 40 years of service to the community as a member of the Plainville Fire Department, I say thank you very much.
First, I'd like to thank certainly my wife. What I've put up with is phenomenal. The guys and girls at the fire department, the public. I'm out on the streets every day, trying to do the best I can. It's a great town. We've had a great staff, the town manager, great backing from him, the Town Council. I just have to say thank you. It's been a great 40 years. And I don't know if you'll get 40 more, but it's been great. Thank you very much.
One more thing. I know we're going to do this later in the meeting, but while everybody's here, I'd also like to recognize the new 2017 Fire Company officers. We have Captain Kirk Plord, First Lieutenant Dave Massey. Wait, why don't you guys stand up this way? Kirk Plord, Dave Massey, Lieutenant Mike Dietrich, Bill Gammon, who is not here, Tim Lennon, who is not here, and John Misca, who is not here. But anyway, great officers. They do a great job for the fire company. And thank you for your service. One last responsibility. I'd like to introduce State Senator Henry Martin and our State Representative, Bill Pettit. They're going to take over from here.
Good evening. Hi, everybody. Congratulations to Tom Boreos for 40 years and retirement. Congratulations. Congratulations to the newly-elected officers for your new positions, as well as Quinn, being a real estate broker. I know without a doubt you are definitely going to love that walk-in closet. Absolutely. But Representative Pettit and myself are truly honored to be here tonight as the Town Council recognizes all of you men who have given your many years of service to the Plainville community. You know, television and the movies make life as a firefighter look, I guess, it's action-packed and it's exciting, but it doesn't really show all the hard work that you all put into what it takes to be a volunteer, the training and the hours you spend on call in particular. A good night is where you don't have a fire or you don't have an accident to attend or there's no emergency whatsoever. But when there is an emergency, you guys are the first ones that are running towards that emergency while the rest of us are really sort of running away from it. As volunteers, many of you have jobs in addition to the time that you've given as a firefighter. And this sometimes means nights, weekends, and holidays away from your families so that you can protect us and our families. It's amazing how long you have been doing this. Some of you, like Fire Marshal Larry Sutherland and Tom Boreo, have been dedicating their time and their service for over 40 years. It takes a special dedicated individual to be a firefighter. And it is our pleasure, Representative Pettit, myself, to present you with these citations as a small token of our appreciation for all that you've done and the time that you've given to the Plainville community. Okay? So, Tom Pettit?
Yeah, I guess you guys are like the anesthesiologists. It's hours of boredom punctuated by moments of terror, right? Waiting around until something terrible happens. That's how anesthesiology is described to people in medical school. But the citation, we'll just read one like Councilman Saunders did. General Assembly official citation introduced by Senator Henry Martin, 31st District, Representative William Pettit, 22nd. Be hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to the firefighters in recognition of you receiving the Plainville Service Recognition Certificate for your years of outstanding service to the fire department. Our community is a safer, better place because of your valiant dedication. We salute you for your years of service. The entire membership of the General Assembly extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses a hope for continued success. January 17th, 2017. Signed by President Pro Tem Martin M. Looney. Joe Aronson was Speaker of the House. Much like many of those autographs you have at home from sports people, Joe's signature you're not going to be able to recognize, looks like a couple of slashes. And Denise Merrill, Secretary of State, who has very nice, they're very nice writing. So Keith Madison, for five years.
Big Billy Gammon's not here. This one, this one I might deliver. And Larry Sutherland.
As we say every time when you guys come to visit us, you're most welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting. However, if you have something that you need to do, we certainly appreciate your coming here tonight. You know that the Town Council realizes how invaluable you are to us. You do the hard work. As Henry Martin said, you run into places where people are running out of. We hope the council can always be there to support you with your training, with whatever needs you might have from us. And again, our sincerest thanks and congratulations to all of you on your anniversaries and to the officers. So if you want to stay, you're welcome to do so. But if you don't, we understand that. Everybody else set? We'll continue on. We do not have a public hearing scheduled for this evening. The next item is approval of the minutes of our previous meeting. Can I have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes of December 19th, 2017, regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections?
And January 12th, 2017.
Oh, okay.
You're going to amend your motion to include the January 12th, 2017 special meeting?
Yes.
All right. Are there any additions or corrections to either one of those minutes? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Announcements and reports? Does anybody have any announcements and reports?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just two things from the two groups, which on the Liaison Committee on Aging, the Senior Center had their 41st Christmas dinner this year with over 60 people participating, and that included people that were celebrating at the center as well as some folks who are homebound and have the dinners delivered. Also, just an update on the dialeride transportation services. As many of you know, Plainville has done that cooperatively for many years with the Bristol Community Organization, BCO, that has, as you've seen in the news, I'm sure, has recently merged with Human Resources Agency, HRA, for Britain.
The microphone isn't working.
They do still maintain the site in Bristol. And just to report that the dialeride transition has really gone very smoothly. It's been very seamless and all is going well with that. Conservation Commission met last week. They are, you know, continuing the review of Pateriski Pond and the report that was presented in December, and also continuing to look at some new ideas for Earth Day 2017.
Right. Thank you. Does anybody else have anything to report? If not, we'll move on. We have appointments and resignations this evening. Number one.
Madam Chair?
You want me to do it?
I think so, yeah. I think that would be good.
My mother would be very disappointed if I didn't. I'd like to make a motion to accept with regret the resignation of Councilwoman Quinn Christopher from the Town Council effective February 1st, 2017.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments?
Madam Chair, after Councilman Saunders goes, I need to say something.
You want to say it first? Go ahead.
No. Again, my mother will be very disappointed if I don't say something. So instead of reading her four-page thing that she wrote me, I do have some words of my own. But, you know, I've been very fortunate. I've served with a lot of different council members, you know, and I can say without hesitation that, you know, you are not only an asset for the town, but for me. It was truly special being able to serve with you. You know, I am a little disappointed, though, now at family dinners, I have to bear the sole weight of my mother telling us what we're doing wrong. You know, it was very nice the last five years to have someone sharing in that, I guess the guilt is probably the best way to put it. You fought for what you believed in. You know, I took it as a great honor that you didn't feel like you always had to agree with me. I know when you first ran, there were always those rumblings that you were just going to do what I told you to do. And clearly, I hope, you know, with what you've demonstrated over the last five years, that's clearly not true. And, you know, I'm very proud of you. I don't mean it to sound condescending, but I'm very proud of you, very proud to have served with you, and always will cherish the time we spent together up here and trying to make Plainville an even better place to live. So good luck and save me a spot by the pool for summer.
Will do.
Madam Chair? I just want to say, Quinn, it's been a pleasure serving with you these last five years, five-plus years. And you certainly brought a different perspective than I have on some issues, which is good because I learned from you. I wish you well. I know you're not moving far, so maybe we'll still see you around the community here.
Oh, yeah, you will. You will.
But I just wanted to say it was nice serving with you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to reiterate, obviously, everything that Chris and Scott have said. And Chris, I mean, Quinn has been very, very helpful to me my first year on the council. And as I've said to a number of people, a number of groups, since we learned of her resignation, is that, you know, she has really served as a wonderful role model for young women who want to get involved in politics and government. And I hope, and I know that that will inspire many people to do so. You've done a great job.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All set? Again, I wish you the very best, Quinn. And as I said, this is not a job a lot of people aspire to. And it is not a lot of job that a lot of people will aspire to. But I congratulate you for taking this challenge on and you carried yourself true to your heart and true to your beliefs. And that is the best we can ask of somebody, is to volunteer time and try to fix some things that may not be right in the community. So you did a great job.
Thank you.
And, you know, maybe Southington will benefit from your...
We'll see.
...experience as well.
Something out of time.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Robert Seattle Senior to the Town Council effective February 1st, 2017.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Robert. See you at the next one. Number two.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to reappoint Kevin Toner as Chief of the Fire Department for a two-year term.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to appoint Thomas Machini as Deputy Chief of the Fire Department, or reappoint Tom Machini as Deputy Chief for the Fire Department for a two-year term.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to reappoint Adrian Paradis as First Assistant Chief of the Fire Department for a two-year term.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to reappoint Robert Planetta as the Second Assistant Chief of the Fire Department for a one-year term.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And last but not least, motion to acknowledge the Fire Company's elected officers for 2017 and recognize the Fire Company Captain and Lieutenant as officers of the Fire Department. And again, those are Kirk Plord, Captain, Dave Massey, First Lieutenant, and Lieutenants Mike Dietrich, Bill Gammon, Tim Lennon, and John Misca.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any comment on the motion? Again, thanks to all of these fellows that give up their time and that they could be with their families or elsewhere to do this important work for the Town of Plainville. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Do we have any other appointments tonight?
I do.
Okay.
Motion to reappoint Michael Glouett to the Inland Wetlands Commission for the term 1/7/17 to 1/7/19.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to reappoint Keith Anderson to the Inland Wetlands Commission for the term 1/7/17 to 1/7/19.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
There's... Okay, so Rob Seattle has to be reappointed? Do I do that or no?
Um, I think he's going to resign.
I don't have to, right?
He'll have to resign.
So I don't need to reappoint? Okay. I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Any others?
Your term was up.
I'll technically have to charge you to serve until a person replaces you, so...
So you just have to resign.
All right. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to reappoint Richard Ireland to the Recycling and Solid Waste Commission.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any others?
Motion to reappoint Wayne Fish to the Recycling and Solid Waste Commission.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay?
Yep. All done.
You go ahead. No. I have just two. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to reappoint William Pettit and Chris D'Argenio to the Downtown Beautification Commission for the term ending 12/31/19.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any others?
You're done, dear?
I'm done.
Madam Chair? Motion to reappoint Jennifer Bartis Early for the term ending 12/31/17 to CROG, Capital Region Council of Governments.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to reappoint Robert Sheddin to the Housing Authority for the term ending 1/31/22.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay?
And last but not least, Madam Chair? And last but not least, Madam Chair, motion to reappoint Elmer Saucier to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the term ending 1/2/21.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any more?
All set.
We're all done? Okay, thanks. That was a lot, but good to get them taken care of. I have number six is Board of Education liaison, Mrs. Saunders.
Good evening. Andrea Saunders, 55, Fawn Drive. Number one, the architects who will be, who are overseeing the Wheeler School Project are going to be attending the next PTO meeting, which is January 25th, to discuss some of the current architectural rendering with the parents. Tomorrow night at 5:00 PM at the high school library, there is a turf meeting. And obviously, top of the list will be talk about the status of the track replacement. And let's see, third, next, next week, the board starts deliberations on their budget. We have three meetings. I'll just quickly tell you, there are Monday, the 23rd, at 7:00 PM. All of these are in the library. Wednesday, the 25th, at 7:00 PM. And February 1st, which is a Tuesday, at 7:00 PM, that was rescheduled from one that was originally the 31st, because we didn't have enough, we didn't have a quorum. And then lastly, I just want to just briefly, Mrs. Puglisi already heard about this, but at our last board meeting, the superintendent started a new program. She calls it Everyday Hero. And it's something she wants to do to acknowledge any staff member or student who has gone above and beyond for another student or colleague. We had three recipients in January. The first, and you have to be nominated by a parent or a teacher. Marcy Miller, who works in the tax department, she nominated a guidance counselor and, actually, a school psychologist and one of her child's teachers. It was Justine Misery and Ellen Nichols. She has a deaf child who had come back into district. And so she was adjusting at the middle school, which we know is hard enough as it is. And so Marcy wrote this beautiful letter. You know, they should videotape it and put it online, because, I mean, after listening to it, I thought it was really inspirational. I thought it was a really nice story about how they've just gone above and beyond to help her daughter adjust socially, learn how to talk to her teachers, just to readjust into going, not only being out of her deaf program, but also being back into a regular public school. And then our second nominee was Paula S. U., Principal Linden. A parent Jill Bright nominated, and on behalf of her children, she was just saying that Paula goes above and beyond every single day to make everyone feel important, and she always has a smile on her face, and she looks for the good in everyone. They especially loved her idea if she acknowledges the awesomeness in her scholars, showing all the kids that it's cool to behave and be respectful and not the other way around. Anyway, there's more information certainly on our website, and we'll be doing this on a regular basis, at every board meeting. And if you have a chance, if, I'm actually to talk to her, actually, it's on film, if you watch the board meeting. But if you get a chance to see it, even just that part, it's really inspirational, and it just makes you feel good about the school. So, anyway, that's all I have. Anybody has any questions? All right, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have one more to add to the resignations, if I could.
Okay.
Motion to accept with regret the resignation of Brent Davenport from the Board of Ed.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Not? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We do not have a report from the town attorney tonight, so the next would be Robert. It would be your report up.
Thank you. I have a couple of items. Make sure that's on. First item is the Clean Energy Communities Municipal Pledge. In 2008, the town of Plainville was the first municipality in Connecticut to sign on to the Clean Energy Communities Municipal Pledge, which was to reduce municipal buildings' energy consumption by 20% by the year 2018. At the Council of Small Towns Annual Meeting held last week in Rocky Hill, EverSource officials announced that Plainville was the first town in the state to attain the goal, and we accomplished it two years earlier than we pledged to do so. They also pointed out that the Plainville school system reduced their energy usage by more than 42% over the last eight years. Thanks certainly go out to Steve Bustle, Lynn Davis, and all of the school personnel, and from all of the school administration for all of their efforts to attain this goal and to save the Plainville taxpayers a significant amount of money that would have otherwise been spent on energy costs. I know that the 150 town officials that were there from all over the state were very impressed, not only with the fact that Plainville was able to attain that two years earlier than what we pledged to do, but that a lot of the savings primarily came through the Board of Education's efforts and the school administration efforts. They certainly have the larger buildings and the larger energy usage, but certainly some of the experiences in other communities is that that incentive to reduce their costs isn't as powerful perhaps as it is here in Plainville. So I was very proud to be in the room when that was announced, and it was acknowledged that Plainville has done very well in that particular area. And we continue to strive to reduce our energy costs further as we move forward. Next item I have is the water survey feedback. As of today, I've received over 100 emails and letters from Plainville residents expressing dissatisfaction with the quality of water being supplied by Valley Water of Plainville. Valley Water is a private water company that supplies water to most of the homes in town. Later this week, I will be meeting with Valley Water officials and State Department of Health officials to discuss what can be done to address these concerns. Most of the complaints involve taste, smell, and the negative impact that the water is having on their fixtures and appliances in their homes. Valley Water has consistently maintained that their water meets or exceeds the standards required of them by DPH for safe and potable water. So I guess the dilemma is, you know, it meets standards supposedly, but is that sufficient in terms of, you know, at least as far as the consumers are concerned? So certainly, we're going to find out from Department of Public Health what their position is on it. I suspect that they will require some additional information provided by Valley Water, so I don't think this is going to be a one-and-done. So, but I certainly will report on the initial meeting, and we'll see where it goes from Next item I have is the flood ordinance discussion. In August, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, otherwise known as FEMA, notified Plainville that they have revised several flood insurance rate maps panels associated with the Quinnipiac River Watershed Restudy Project for Hartford County. These revised panels will become effective on May 17th of this year. In order for Plainville to remain eligible to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, the Town Council must adopt revised regulations that include the new date of these panels. The Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection has reviewed Plainville's existing floodplain ordinance and has detailed the changes that need to be made in it. Town staff has incorporated these changes and is recommending that the Town Council revise the ordinance accordingly. The Town Council wishes to pursue the recommendation a public hearing must first be held. There is an item under New Business which would schedule this public hearing for the February 6 Town Council meeting. John Bossy, Town Engineer, is here this evening as well, if you have any questions about the floodplain and the National Flood Insurance Program, which basically is an insurance program that provides some support to those homes that are homeowners that are located in the flood, you know, in a 100-year floodplain, to reduce, help to reduce or keep in check some of their insurance. Certainly, those supports that have been provided have decreased over time, so that the flood insurance rates are going up, but they certainly would go up more if the town of Plainville did not have, did not update our ordinance and were not qualified under the program. The ordinance also requires that anybody who's building in a floodplain has to build their occupied areas, you know, generally, what they call their first-floor elevation has to be higher than the 100-year flood. And under ordinance, we're required to make sure that if somebody's building in that particular area, that that first-floor elevation is above that, you know, by ordinance. So these changes need to be made in order to continue to qualify for this National Flood Insurance Program. But before you can do that, a public hearing must be held to at least, if anybody has any questions, we could answer questions and so forth and so on. All right. Next item I have is the consultant for the 2017 CDBG Small Cities Application. Now, CDBG stands for Community Development Block Grant, Small Cities Application. The town received two proposals to provide professional services related to the 2017 Small Cities Program. The town is working with the Plainville Housing Authority to submit an application to make bathroom upgrades to 60 of their units. Proposals were received from L. Wagner &amp; Associates and Lisa Low &amp; Associates. Any services provided will be paid for with funds under the Small Cities Program if the town is successful in securing a grant. In other words, the town will not pay any funds if we're not, you know, if we're not successful in securing a grant. And the consultant will get paid for any work that they perform, even for putting the grant application together through the grant funds, should the grant be awarded. Town staff is recommending that L. Wagner &amp; Associates be chosen to provide the services relating to the 2017 Small Cities Program. L. Wagner has worked with the town for many years and has done a very fine job in securing grant funds under this program, as well as managing the projects. There is an item under New Business regarding this recommendation. Finally, we have the financial dashboard as of the end of December. The financial dashboard was included in the information package for this evening's meeting. The financial dashboard was reviewed at our state, you know, at our joint meeting with the Board of Education last week, so the numbers have not changed, but I will briefly go over them for the record, and these will be posted on the town webpage. Again, the expenditures are through, first six months of the year through December 31st for the town budget, total town budget, which includes the Board of Education and general government budget. We spent 27 of the $57 million to date, or a little bit under 47%. Our two-year average for the last, you know, over that, for that same dollar, same amount, was a little bit over 47%. So we're pretty much running in line with our two-year, you know, what's happened over the last two years. General government budget, we spent 12 of the $23 million to date, or a little bit over 52.5%. Two-year average is about 52.8%, so we're pretty much in line on the general government side. Same pretty much goes with the Board of Education. They've spent 15 of their $34.8 million, 43.1% spent. Two-year average is a little bit over, right around 43%. So both at 43, 43 and change. Haller tonnage is municipal solid waste, running a little bit under our two-year average right now. So that's, so that's pretty much in line with what was projected. Not surprisingly, on police overtime, we're running over, we're running at 76% spent, where our two-year average has been about 63%. We certainly have discussed this, you know, fairly often at council meetings. A lot of it has to do with the fact that we're down several officers, and in order to fill some of the shifts, requires additional overtime. So there is some savings on the fact that we're not paying for certain, for some salaries, so that could be used as a transfer at some point in time, but I don't think it'll make up for the police overtime in its entirety. Roadways overtime, running over budget. Part of that is due to leaf pickup, and part of that is due to some of the work that they've been doing under the road bond program. Buildings and ground overtime is running a little bit over budget as well. Roadway snow overtime is running under budget. We separate out the regular overtime versus the snow overtime. To date, we've spent about $9,000 for overtime for snow of a $40,000 budget for roadways. And buildings and ground snow overtime spent $5,400 of a $23,000 budget. So things are looking good, at least for the rest of the week, but they said we might get some ice tonight, so we'll just keep our fingers crossed with that. On the revenue side, on all revenues, we've collected 57% of our revenues, 57.2% of our revenues so far. Two-year average is 56.7%. So we're running a little bit over our two-year average, which has been very positive with regards to meeting our budgeted amount. Current taxes, which is generally an early warning sign of whether there's difficulties in the community for people paying their current taxes, we're running at 66%, 66.1%. Our two-year average is 65.55%, so we're running a little bit better than we have in previous years. Our fund balance, you know, once we take into account the additional appropriation that was made at our last meeting for the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Phase 1 and Phase 2 projects, our fund balance right now is a little bit over $9 million, which works out to a little bit, right around 16%. On our special funds, Recreation Fund, we are running a little bit under our two-year average as far as expenditures, and as far as our revenues, we're running a little bit over our two-year average as far as revenues, so the Recreation Fund is, looks to be on budgeted. The Robertson Airport, it's running over in expenditures, but that has to do with a timing issue with some of the FAA projects that are going on. Once we get reimbursements for them, you know, that will drop off. But our fund balance for Robertson Airport is standing in excess of $350,000 right now. And that's on a budget of $100,000, so we're running pretty healthy on the fund balance for Robertson Airport. Water Pollution Control Facility expenditures, running a little bit higher than the two-year average at 58.8%. And our revenues received, and I think it's a timing issue, we received about 89% of our user charge fees. Our two-year average has been close to 100%. I think that's a timing issue in terms of booking the revenues. With regards to Plainville Library expenditures, we're running at 57.1%. Two-year average is 57.7. Pretty much on budget on the expenditure side. On the revenue side, we're running at 51%. Our two-year average has been 47, so we're a little bit ahead on the revenues as well. All those particular special funds are running fairly healthy. On the health insurance fund, and this is only through November claims, we don't get the December claims until probably towards the end of January, so we don't have a full six-month of experience there. But for the month of November, expected claims are 508,000. We ran at about half of that at 263. Year-to-date, we're ahead for the first five months of almost, well, a little bit over $900,000. It comes with a little bit of a caution, and that is that generally, because we have a high deductible health plan, generally, the first several months, people are paying their own deductibles, so, you know, the usage is usually lesser in the first several months. If people meet their deductibles, then they begin, you know, it begins to come out of the self-insurance fund, health insurance fund. We still feel that, you know, we're in pretty good shape in comparison to previous years, but I just put that as a caution, that we expect that that will pick up somewhat over the next couple of months. Hopefully, not enough to overcome the surplus that we have in the current fiscal year for that. On the major projects report, nothing much has changed. Park Improvement Fund, you may have noticed that they are working on the playground at both replacement, at both Norton Park, and then they will move over to Pateriski Park as well, but that is moving along mainly due to the, you know, the fact that winter hasn't set in as much as it could have otherwise, but that's looking good. Turf Field Project, we still begin, we're still working with, you know, working through on the track process, you know, the track issue. Nothing new on Old Linden, road bond, quick street reconstruction. Nothing new on old linen, road bond, quick street reconstruction, or, you know, the phosphorus removal project, which we expect, we'll have probably some type of update on that from the consultants. Hate to do it in the middle of the budget process, but, you know, so it may, it may be sometime in either late April or, you know, in the timeframe after, at least you finalize your budget recommendations, so. That's all I have to report. On the financial dashboard, we, I'm not sure, is, is that up online right now? Did we put that up online based upon what we had last week?
I'm not sure if that's on there right now.
We may, we may put that as part of, as part of the presentation. If, if, if not, we'll, we'll, we'll have it up by tomorrow during, during the, during the day, so. If, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Scott Kobe for some happenings, and then something will be available for any questions or comments you may have for us.
All right, so I have a few events happening at the Plainville Senior Center. They're hosting a Books and Bagels Wednesday, February 8th at 9:30 a.m., and the title of the book that they're going to discuss is called "The Whip." It's an amazing tale of an old west, western, written by Karen Condezain. It's a story of a young woman in Rhode Island whose destruction of her family drove her west to California, tracking the man responsible. The program is free. Please call the Senior Center to register. They're also offering three fitness class demonstrations hosted by their fitness instructor, Kristin Champagne. These will be free demonstrations that she will conduct at the Senior Center. The first one is a beginner's functional fitness that will be hosted Thursday, January 19th at 11:30 a.m., and then they will be offering an intermediate functional fitness Thursday, January 19th at 1 p.m., and power burst Monday, January 23rd at 1 p.m. If you are a Plainville Senior Center member and these classes sound good to you, you're able to sign up for the eight-week sessions at the Senior Center. New members are always welcome. New questions for social worker Stephanie Susi. If anybody has any questions on Medicare, Medicaid, the Medicare Savings Program, housing options, questions in regards to finding Alzheimer's help in the community, caregiving, home gear, please stop by the Plainville Senior Center and have an individual conversation with her. This program is for Plainville residents 60 years of age and over. No pre-registration is necessary. And they will be offering a Staying on Your Feet in the Snow lesson Friday, January 27th at 10 a.m. There are a few basic safety measures and precautions we can all do when we are out in the ice and snow to prevent falls and injuries. Please join Mark Coachello, Good Life Fitness Exercise Physiologist of the Southington Care Center, as he discusses ways to keep yourself safe this winter. This program is free. Please call the Senior Center to register. And they will also be having a mobile mammogram screening at the Senior Center parking lot Tuesday, February 28th from 9 a.m. to 1:45 p.m. Insurance is accepted, free for women with no insurance as well. No one will be turned away for the inability to pay, and it's open to women of any age. There are eligibility, eligibility requirements for mammogram screening. Please inquire and register with the Senior Center. And the State of Connecticut Energy Assistance Program is available to income-eligible residents. Information on income guidelines and more is explained in the Senior Center December Newsletter, or call the Human Resources Agency, formerly Bristol Community Organization, at 860-582-7490. And some information from the Tax Assessor's Office. Revaluation against the October 2016 grant list is in full swing. Valuation notices have been mailed out to all taxable properties in town. Property owners who have questions about their valuation may contact the revaluation company directly at 1-800-497-6026. Hearings with revaluation company employees will be beginning January 17th and running through January 31st in the lower level of the municipal center. If someone has not received their notice, they can contact the assessor's office, where they will be then provided with one. And residents have until February 1st, 2017, 4 p.m. to pay their second installment of their real estate and personal property, plus their motor vehicle supplemental bills. Anybody with any questions concerning these may also contact the tax assessor's office. And just a reminder that the State of the Town will be held next Thursday, January 26th at 6:30 p.m. in the Plainville Library Auditorium. That's all I have to report on.
I just wanted to add that, you know, the State of the Town is something that's sponsored by the Plainville Chamber of Commerce. We thank them for, you know, sponsoring and coordinating this, this program. They generally have held it in the morning, and they haven't had, a lot of people who have attended it in the past, including some of their own members, so they, they're trying something a little bit different this year, and that is to have it in the evening. Certainly, the public is, you know, chamber members, they encourage to attend, but, but it's supposedly geared towards letting the businesses in town, you know, know of, you know, how things are going within the community, but certainly the general public is invited to attend that as well.
Great. Does anybody have any questions for Robert on his report, or for Scott with his report that he gave us tonight? Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just on the water, the survey feedback, were you able to notice, is there a pattern, you know, in terms of location within town where people seem to have more concerns than in other locations? I mean, I know it was not a systematic survey, you know, just people who voluntarily.
Yeah, I think, I think, well, the complaints and the feedback we received is, is, you know, is probably from all corners of the community. I will say that, you know, from my reading, quick reading of them and locations, it seems like the more, in general, this, the more serious issues as it relates to the impact on appliances seem to be more towards the eastern end of town, and perhaps even more towards the southeastern end of town. We suspect that's because those areas are primarily supplied by the wells that are located in the Hamlin's Pond area, as opposed to northwest dry, which has some type of filtering facility there. Although the water is, is mixed, you know, as it goes through the system, they are connected, but we haven't done an in-depth, you know, analysis of that yet. We'd like to provide the raw data to, to both the state and Valley Water and see, you know, how they feel it should be approached.
Right, and understanding against, this wasn't a systematic type of a survey, just people that offered up their, their feedback, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Are there any other questions for the town manager? Robert, at this point, we're almost halfway through our fiscal year. Is there anything, as you are looking at what's going on, that we should maybe be concerned with, or something we need to pay close attention to? The state has already changed some of their grant funding that's coming down, so is there anything else that you think? I mean, it looks as if ours are pretty much, for this time of the year, the revenues and expenditures are tracking the way they normally do?
Yes.
But is there anything that you can see that may be a concern, or that we should keep a closer watch on?
Couple of things. One is, our ECS for the current fiscal year was reduced by about $96,000. This is a, you know, based, you know, this is, you know, $10 million in aid we get for ECS, you know, $96,000 is, you know, 1%, you know, a little bit less than 1%. So, I still anticipate that overall, revenues will come in at budget, if not a little bit higher than what was anticipated. Certainly, it'll be $96,000 less than what we would have otherwise had, but I, I still believe that we're going to come in, you know, and collect, overall, that we're going to have some that are going to come over, and, and this is one that's going to come under, but I think overall, we're going to end up a little bit better than what we had budgeted on the revenue side. Certainly, we're nervous about what's going to happen with the governor's announcement on his budget, which is on February 8th, so we're just, you know, just, just being cautious at this point in time and waiting for that, at least for that starting point to occur, despite the, the recognition that the state legislature adopting their budget in either, you know, late May, early June, and sometimes even into the next fiscal year is, is not really conducive to, you know, to our budgeting, our, our budgeting timetable, which, which, you know, our, our vote on the, on the, on our local budget is, you know, April, I think it's April 26th or something along those lines. So, you know, if we don't, if we don't have a finalized budget by then from the state's side, it certainly could change fairly dramatically after that. So, I think we need to keep an eye on that and be very conservative as far as what we're anticipating on, on the revenue side there. We're in a reval year, so that's, you know, makes it a little bit more complicated as well, but we'll try to, you know, try to, try to help people work their way through, you know, you know, what kind of changes are as a result of revaluation, as opposed to what type of changes are the result of, you know, the budget itself. You know, a lot of the residential properties and, and the, you know, the revaluation notices were sent out. I received mine on Saturday, so I didn't, you know, they were mailed either Thursday or Friday. I know that a lot of the, the homes had a, their valuations went down, condominiums as well. We're expecting that commercial properties' valuations will go up. You know, what that means overall in the mix, you know, remains to be seen. As soon as that information is available, we'll incorporate it into the budget, and hopefully, you know, be able to explain, you know, what's going on as far as that's concerned. On the expenditure side, nothing really surprising. You know, I'm, I expect to present a status quo budget from the general government side. We are currently, have an opening in our Buildings and Grounds Department that I've put on hold until we see what's going to happen at the state level and, and work our way through the process. This is a position that's been, is currently funded in the, in the, in the current fiscal year. Certainly, the money is there to, to hire someone and, you know, and to replace that position. I certainly think it's a needed position, but, you know, given our, our budget situation and the uncertainties, I've directed Human Resources to at least delay the hiring, and depending upon what happens going forward, you know, we may have to make do with what we have, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's a good situation either, because it's a, it's a HVAC, you know, position, and, and the more that we're able to do ourselves, the less that we have to rely on outside contractors to do as well, so, you know, the position is, is something that I think is, is valuable. But, you know, other than the police overtime, which, you know, the council is, is well aware of, I don't see, you know, any, any warning signs as far as the, on the expenditure side, so. You know, we've done a pretty good job over the last, you know, 10 years or so of predicting and, and projecting our expenditures versus our revenues. We generally come in a little bit less on the expenditure side. We, we generally do a little bit better on the, on the, on the revenue, you know, on the revenues side. I know that in, in speaking with the superintendent of schools, Maureen Brummett, you may recall that after our budget was completed, the state reduced some aid to the town, and the Board of Education and the school administration agreed to figure out a way to not spend $100,000 of their money that, of money that was authorized for them to spend. In recent conversations with Maureen, she indicated that, that they, they can still meet that goal of, of coming in $100,000 less than what was appropriated for their line item. They made some, you know, adjustments to, to their budget after the fact, and, and as a result, you know, they're still on target as far as that's concerned. So, that's good news. So, they, they, they're keeping a close eye on special education. Their excess cost dollars are coming in a little bit higher than what they anticipated, but, but they still expect to get reimbursed for, for that additional cost, but that's always a, you know, you know, but that's coming from the state, so. The money supposedly is there. They're still anticipating that that's not going to materially impact their budget, but that certainly is something we got to keep an eye on. So, with those caveats, I would say that other than that word.
Okay, well, I'm sure you'll let us know as soon as you know, if anything starts to go sideways, either on the board or the town side, that we need to make some panicky adjustments to before the end of the year. Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for the town manager before we move on?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Before, before we move on, I did miss one other appointment, which I would like to try and make right now if I can. And that is to, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Glenn Pettit to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the term ending 1/21.
Second. Okay, I have a motion in a second for Glenn Pettit to Planning and Zoning, correct?
Yes.
Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, that's it? Any others? All right. Okay, we'll move on to our public comment section of the meeting. During this time, we ask the public to step to the podium. Please state your name and address. You'll be given three minutes, and I do wish, I will ask that when folks come to the podium to please address the council. Don't single out town staff or other people. You're here to speak to us, and hopefully, we can answer questions or get the answers for you. So, a courteous discourse is always welcome, but if you could keep in mind that you're here to talk to us and not the staff or any, anybody else that might be here. The first person on the list is Joanne Edman.
Joanne Edman, 166 West Main Street. Start with the prayer, and of course, again, it's not at the beginning like they do in New Britain or some of the other surrounding towns, but here we go. Oh dear God, our heavenly Father, please grant our town council the wisdom, knowledge, strength, and courage to perform their elected duties and responsibilities to the citizens and charter of Plainville. And before I say amen, in closing, I'm going to say, God bless, and please, hopefully, the people of, in this town are taking good care of their animals. It's winter, and I could say then, in summer too, animals can't speak. We have to be their voice, and it's cold out right now, and I know there's a lot of people who take wonderful care of their animals, but there's also those who do not have it in their heart to take care of them, and they're cruel, and there's situations out there that are deplorable, and I hope that people will take note of, and be ever vigilant. If you see something, say something. So, amen. Now, last council meeting, I quoted, or made a statement about a quote in a story, and I stand to be corrected because I read the wrong quote. The, I, and to, to straighten out which, which is which, from which story, the quote of boiling bubble, toil and trouble, comes from not Snow White, but it reads like this from none other than Macbeth. And it goes, and we have that right here in Plainville. We have the bubbling track. Double, double toil and trouble. Fire burn and cauldron bubble. Track bubble. We still don't know what's happened over there, and everybody's being very closed-mouth about that track. So, I hope that something will be relayed to the people pretty soon, because it's pretty awful that kids can't use that for a whole year. Something went terribly wrong, and you know what? I think something not, is not too good with the turf either.
Joanne, your time has expired.
So, you know what? Do not interrupt me, Kathy.
Your time has expired.
No, no, it hasn't, because I have something else to, to tell you.
You were given three minutes.
I did some research.
Your time is up.
I did some research. Let's go over to the, the Historical Society.
Your time has expired, Joanne.
The Historical Society building, the Old Town Hall, what I did, oh, first of all, there was a wonderful article that was recently, recently came. Kathy, don't interrupt me.
Your time is up.
No, no, it is not up. No, no, Kathy, it's not up. You know what? I, there was a wonderful article that, there was a wonderful article that appeared in the Bristol Press, and I don't have it with me tonight, but it was called "Saving History." And I'm going to give Kathy, I'm going to give Carol.
I have a motion to recess.
I'm going to give Carol.
Second. I have a second?
A copy of what.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
That I did.
We're going to take a three-minute recess, people. From our recess, the next person on the list is John Kislak.
Good evening, Town Consulars.
Hello.
John Kislak, 65 Forestville Avenue. Like I said at the last meeting, myself and CPOA is going to miss Quinn, but Robert Seoto is an excellent pick for this council, and I'm glad you appointed him before I got up here to speak in favor, because I didn't want to hurt his chances. One thing I want to, one issue I want to bring up about Robert, when he was on the council, myself and a couple of other citizens were really hot on this town putting the trash collection out to bed. And that's one thing I've been on, you know, I like us to bid on things, keep people honest. Well, Robert was on the council, along with two other consulars, and they were instrumental in putting the project out to bed. And from what I understand, we saved over $100,000 on that contract. So to me, that's somebody who is looking out for this town. I appreciate it, and I'm glad you're back on. I know we won't agree on everything, but I'm pretty sure we're on the same page with a few issues, so I'll let that go. Last meeting, I talked about, I was going to do some research on our fund balance. And thanks to Nutmeg TV with their On-Demand View, I looked up a meeting from February 17, 2015, and Natella Mattie from Bloom Chaparral made her report on our audit. And in it, I know this is old, so the figures don't last. Our fund balance was $12 million, and our undesignated fund balance of that part was $11.1 million. All our other funds, like I was talking about, other funds, now I realize, we have the sewer fund, we have the airport fund, we have the housing fund, and all other things. They only equaled about $900,000 at that time. The fund was increased by 5.2 million that year because of capital projects ending. Now, some might have been, projects came in under, so it was a little bit. I saw one year, a project came in, $275,000 under, so that was added in. But my point about this whole thing is, we're taking money that was for capital projects, some estate money, like for the schools, and we get the final payment. Instead of paying off the project, which we have borrowed money, we're paying interest, we're taking that money and putting in the undesignated fund balance. So the way I look at this is, we're paying interest on this money that's borrowed, and we're putting it in undesignated fund that we maybe make a quarter of a percent interest. So to me, it doesn't make sense, and to me, it's like we're artificially increasing our undesignated fund balance, because it really isn't our money, it's borrowed money that we're putting in there. Maybe I've seen this wrong, but, you know, I'm not a financial whiz, but this is my question with this town. I think we have to, when we get some of these things, instead of doing something like this, pay down some more of these loans for our, what do we call it? Every year, it's in our budget for...
Debt service?
Debt service. That's my...
John, I'm going to ask you to wrap up. Your time is, I know it goes quickly, but...
I know. I appreciate you listening to me. Next meeting, I'm going to talk on Wheeler Clinic and that project. Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that hasn't signed up?
Good evening, council members. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you.
Thank you. Marilyn Schreit, 18 Milford Street in Plainville. Quinn, what can I say? I know that you won't be forgotten in this town, for sure.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
And I personally want to say thank you so much for hearing us and sticking with us. The residents of Plainville really respect you and want to say thank you as well. I know they do. Maybe they're not all here, but they say thank you for your service and your time. I have two personal concerns that I have. One is right over by my house, and that is the front of Linden Street School. It was my understanding that we built this parking lot so we wouldn't be having parking on the street, and yet, I really don't see that new parking lot being used. And I am seeing parking on both sides of the street, which was a concern of all the residents that live in the area. So I'd like to have that addressed, if possible. I mean, the people that work there aren't even using the parking lot, so, you know, I just, I fail to see the value in us spending all that money if we aren't going to use it. And for safety reasons, of course. The other one that I have, and I go down Church Street quite frequently to get over onto Broad Street, and at the curb on the left side, if you're going towards Broad Street, there's a hedge that's quite high, and you cannot, you have to go past the stop sign, well past the stop sign, to see any traffic coming from the center of Plainville. So I wish that you could look into that. I mean, it's way high up. I can't see...
Is it obstruct your vision trying to get out? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah. You have to go well past the stop sign. The hedge is well too high. Okay? And that's all I have for tonight, but I want to say thank you to all of you, and I wish you a very happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak? Yes.
Dale Block, Forest C N C. I had given Mr. Lee my water survey. I just want to let you know, I did, because I live in an apartment, I walked around my street yesterday and talked to the homeowners to see what they said, and some of them did have issues, some of them didn't have any sense of smell or taste, so that wasn't any good, but some did have some issues there, so it wasn't just our apartment building. I wouldn't mind going back if you needed more information at all, but I don't think, I can't remember if I was here for the last meeting, and is there a report regarding the, you know, the lake, the pond, Podowski?
Pedroski?
Yes. My Polish isn't very good. Is there a report about it that's on?
On the line.
It is? Okay. All right. So I'll just read that. And my last thing is, if Malloy's budget comes out, and there's some awful things that might affect Pol... I'm sorry. Affect Plainville, let me know, because I watch his budget all the time, and I have picketed. I go right out all by myself, and I picket. I've testified. I've learned how to testify by coming here. You get three minutes there, too. Anyhow, thank you for helping me to learn how to do that, but if you need help, I'm like five or 10 minutes from there. I can go at lunch with my board. I'm very good at that. Thank you.
Thanks, Gail. Does anybody else wish to speak?
Robert Seoto, 35 Julie Road. Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and other members of the council, I want to thank you each for confirming my appointment to the Town Council tonight to replace Councilwoman Christopher. And Quinn, you will be missed, and I want to thank you for everything you've done for our town over the years, and you will be missed. I appreciate the council's support and the kind words that I've heard and read over the last couple of days in the newspapers. I'm looking forward to working and serving on the council once again, and working with each of you over the next nine months, and hopefully, longer. So thank you again, and I appreciate your support, and I'll see you on February 6th.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? And it's not spoken. Anybody else? Last chance. Okay. Finished with that. We have no old business, so on to our new business portion. We have a few items to vote on.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to ratify the Public Works Collective Bargaining Agreement for the term July 1, 2016, through June 30th, 2019.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to establish a public hearing Monday, February 6, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. in the Municipal Center to hear public comment regarding an amendment to the flood ordinance.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to award RFP number 2107-12, 2017, CDVG, Small Cities Application and Professional Services to L Wagner and Associates, Waterbury, Connecticut.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Two. Number four?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the revised tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Other discussions of interest? Robert, would you have anything else you'd like to share tonight?
Nothing, nothing.
Okay.
Further?
All right. We have no executive session, so I vote for a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair? Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.